Well, I'm glad this was really looked better than the picture than the rest of us. Let's see. It's at the top. Just give him a hard time.
You guys, the Board of Education. See it? The Board of Education, okay? Yeah, and look what we did. We put advocacy here. So you have it right at the first.
Are you guys ready? Ready to go?
Good evening. Welcome to the November 12, 2024 Work and Special Session of the Board of Education. This is Joseph Silio, President of the Board of Education, speaking. Thank you for attending in person or through Zoom. Please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as law.
Do you notice that today's meeting has been provided to the public and each member of the Board of Education as required by law? Tina, will you please take attendance? Present. Present. Present.
Present.
Present.
Present.
Present.
Present.
It's time may have a motion to accept the agenda for November 12, 2024 Work Session as presented.
Still moved.
All in favor? Aye. Tonight, we're having a presentation on regionalization. I'm sure some of you have seen it in the news and in the press. Dr. Sinha is going to take us through the Board and her thoughts on the regionalization plan as proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Silio. So, you know, as you just said before, and lately in the news, we've heard quite a bit about the state, New York State Education Department's regionalization initiative. So tonight, you know, what we will do is provide an overview of this initiative, our current collaborative efforts, and then community concerns and our, again, our commitment to preserving local control and district identity. All right, and so we'll take you through these slides and then maybe later on, Mr. Necco and Ms. Papas, you can share because you all attended the webinar for regionalization. So just in terms of some key terms that you'll, that you'll, if you're on the website for regionalization, you'll hear a lot about New York State Education Department. That is our, since we're a public, we're a public school. We are obligated to comply by the rules that they set forth for us, the Commissioners' Regulation. The BOCs, which is the Board of Cooperative Educational Services, they provide regional shared services to districts. And that means they create efficiencies in areas like special education, career technical support, professional development, and, you know, things of that nature. We work closely with Nassau BOCs. If we need something, we do go to them. And again, to provide us with support. The District Superintendent, they actually act as, both as a regional leader, but then also a representative for the Commissioner of Education, and their role is to really help us to better understand what's going on at the state level. So, in terms of what is this intent for this regionalization initiative, their goal is to promote equity and operational efficiencies among districts statewide. And it seeks to address disparities and streamline processes for improved outcomes. So an example of that that was shared with us was that, for example, in upstate where there's declining enrollment, and they're looking to make sure that students in those declining enrollment districts, they receive the same type of, particularly AP courses, that how can they coordinate with other districts? That was an example that was shared with us around, you know, this initiative. Some of the background of this is that this regulation was introduced as an emergency regulation on September 9, 2024, with plans for permanent adoption January 2025. And there are other timelines that go along with this that is on the website. So just so you know, everything that's on here, the links, there's hyperlinks throughout this presentation. So if anybody wants to learn more about it, it's, you know, they can click on those links. Then the districts, we are obligated to complete the strengths and needs tool, and that's due by December 6, 2024. And again, it is to assess the readiness and identify areas of potential collaboration. Again, what I'm sharing with you, this is what we received from the State Education Department. And in terms of us as districts, we learned about this in September. So the timeline is of a challenge. And it's, again, you know, it's also disruptive for districts because the timeline, there's a lot of paperwork that needs to be completed, this survey that needs to be done, and there are multiple offices that are involved, the curriculum office, the business office, the data office. And that, again, that was due in November, and they changed the timeline to December now. Okay.
Can I just ask a quick question? What was in the strengths and needs? Can you just give a couple of examples of things they were asking?
They were looking for, I know, Alice, you had worked on it. Do you want to talk about some of the data pieces that they required?
Sure. It's actually broken up into three domains. There's the academic domain, which does require that we submit a lot of our student data from three to eight assessments to Regents' exams to whether or not and which AP courses we offer. There is information around portrait of a graduate in there as well. Then there's the social-cultural domain, which deals with things like attendance and enrollment, how many electives, extracurricular opportunities, community service opportunities, what support services we have for family, community. Then there's information around teachers and what our personnel criteria are, what are certifications that we have, the rate of turnover of teachers is asked. And then there's questions around facilities and technology and buses and budgeting.
It is very, in terms of time commitment, there's a significant amount of time that's needed to complete this, this tool. So, so anyway, that is a disruption. I think the, you know, that's what was difficult for districts, that how do you complete this in such a short amount of time? The latest update from New York's State Education Department is as of November 6. And again, that's also a hyperlink, that graph that's there. And it's basically, you know, within that, it's basically saying that all school districts are required to participate in their local regionalization conversations. And upon completing the plan, school districts are only required to implement activities that they have agreed or consented to for their local contacts in the final plan. So if you click on that graph that's there, the infographic, you come up with that, and there is a Q and A on that as well. And if you go down, when they have the FAQs further down, it says, NYSD has no intention of forcing local school districts reorganization or creating regional districts operated by BOCs. So I think that is a major confusion that there is none, but there's a sense of urgency about completing this, the information that they're seeking from districts. So we collaborate all the time with our local districts. So these are some examples of our collaboration, how we collaborate within our area. So we already collaborate with a nearby district to optimize our transportation, reducing costs and increasing efficiencies. We've done that for several years. That's done over the summer and throughout the year. If there is a need, because we transport our students within districts, but there are so many out of district places that our students are transported to as well. We have curriculum meetings, most of them, they're monthly meetings. They foster, again, professional collaboration, and it helps us to align with best practices. We partnership with BOCs as well for, again, special education, some of the other professional development offerings for mental health. So that's there. And purchasing as well. And literacy and technology initiatives, we as groups with, you know, there's several of us as superintendents. We form small groups and we're, we work together on certain initiatives. And, you know, I also want to mention, there are groups for like curriculum and instruction, HR, you know, the business office. So there are these, the, the structure is there for us, and we really optimize that structure. We also have with our neighboring districts, which is quadrant meetings, we meet with them on a monthly basis with our colleagues there. So some of the assurances that state ed versus the concerns, they're saying that there's no forced mergers or reorganization, and that their focus is on collaboration. But concerns that you hear in Garden City and other places is this potential loss of control and the autonomy that our districts have. And there may be, you know, budget implications. And again, I talked before about the rapid timeline challenges. That's, that's significant for us. And then for us as a, you know, where do we stand in Garden City? What stance do we, are we taking with this initiative? What we, what we are focusing on is that the, the, you know, we want to make sure that the, we strongly advocate, again, preserving our local control that's there, and decisions affecting our children should remain within our district here. And collaboration should be voluntary and driven by the needs and interests of our community. And we, you know, we opposing mandates that could compromise our educational values here in Garden City. And we also have a very rich history and culture in our district that we want to make sure we hold on to that for our community. And then possible impacts for Garden City, again, loss of decision-making, and we want to make sure that authority is within our, our, you know, that we hold on to that basically. And reallocating, again, taxpayers' funds without guaranteed benefits that could harm our local programming here and services possibly. And aligning our regional goals with Garden City's unique needs may dilute the educational priorities and disrupt what makes us who we are as a district. And then just final thoughts, we want to, again, make sure there are, there's a commitment to the, that we remain committed to collaboration while holding on to the local control. We want to, we want to be collaborative. We respect that, but with local governance. And then, you know, again, making sure our identity and we protect what is, you know, how we are successful for a reason, and those success factors, we want to hold on to that. And, you know, we want to ensure that our decisions we make and things we do, they're more community-driven here for Garden City. And then finally, these are some resources of the Board of Education. You wrote a letter, so that's on our website. The Long Island Coalition, that the district belongs with, that's up there. And those are all hyperlinks. They can, anybody who wants to find additional information is there. And the state information on regionalization, that link is there as well.
Thank you, Dr. Sinha. I'm going to turn it over to some of my colleagues to give their thoughts, but I just wanted to add from where I sit, and I'm, I'll let each member of the board speak for themselves, but a couple of concerns or issues that we're trying to sort through. Obviously, this was done in emergency regulation. I'm not sure what the emergency is right now. And as Dr. Sinha outlined, the timeline is suspect to me to do it in such a short period of time. Over a three-month period seems like something that's either not being thoughtful or they're not being honest about what they're intending to do. Because any sort of regionalization plan would take years and years to even think about or contemplate and implement. So that's a concern I personally have. I think some of the board members share that sentiment or want to get to the bottom of that. It does seem like their intention is to pool resources. And what does that mean for our school district? You can take your own interpretation. My interpretation is, is that that could have a negative impact on how we spend our funds for our students and our community. And so anything that impacts that, obviously, is something that I would be against personally, and I think impacts the Board and the administration and what they're trying to do with our students. We spend a lot of time talking about different issues and how to spend money and how to service our kids. This would add the complication of maybe losing some of our resources, some of our dollars, and having to allocate them potentially to other districts or potentially to other students not in our district. So that's something that I think needs a real explanation. You know, they say there's no intent to require anybody to do it, but they're doing it under emergency regulation. So I know what they're saying in public, and I know they've received back, you know, some backlash. And we obviously signed a letter and other districts did as well. And there's a lot going on in the public forum that you can look into. But anything that they originally started saying didn't say they intended to require, but they're acting like it's going to be a requirement. So I'm a little, little suspect personally that what they're saying in public and what they plan on doing might, might not be consistent with, you know, some of the statements they've made after they've received public pushback. One of the things that Dr. Sinha talked about, local control, but there's been no discussion of how the Board of Education, which oversees our local community with the administration, fits in this process of regionalization. So it might be an unfounded fear, but the fear is that the Board of Education would theoretically lose some of its power locally to work with the administration to achieve the goals of the local district versus whatever the regionalization district or regionalization plan is, which, you know, is definitely something that we want to understand more. And we're definitely very concerned about. I would highlight that, you know, as part of this plan, the New York City schools are exempt from this, this plan, so they're not required to participate, which, you know, once again, given the resources they have at their disposal, seems odd and unique. And so I'm not sure why they would be exempt while others aren't. I think, you know, what we've heard from the state has been that some districts in more rural areas could use a regionalization plan to help them. I don't understand personally how that impacts schools in Nassau and Suffolk and Westchester, where there's obviously, you know, it's densely populated. There's a ton of resources and doesn't seem to be the same issue, at least from maybe some of the rural parts of the state. But it seems like a one-size-fits-all policy is what they're, is what they're pushing, which kind of leads me to some of the things I previously, previously outlined. So we're just very concerned that this will impact our funding, our school funding, the resources won't be used for our kids. Ultimately, although it hasn't been spelled out, but in the past, the state does have some financial issues. And so some of this, at least from where I sit, seems like they're trying to solve for budgetary issues and state aid. And so a good way to do that is to pool, potentially pool resources and address some financial problems they have. We don't receive a ton of state aid. We do receive some state aid, but it could be a lever that's used in these negotiations in the budgeting process for next year as the state thinks about what they're going to do. And so state aid could be impacted positively or negatively. I assume it's probably negatively because we have been on the receiving end of negative adjustments to our state aid over the last couple of years, at least when I've been on the board. And so those are some of my concerns. And I wish the, you know, that NICID would do a better job of communicating their goals, do it in a way that, a process that is not an emergency, the timelines are longer, allows for collaboration of the superintendents. Dr. Sinha is talking to other superintendents in other districts about this issue, but, you know, we're being forced to pull together information that takes a fair amount of time to pull together while also trying to figure out what the goals and the plans are. So, you know, I'm just very skeptical that what they're saying and what they ultimately want to do are two different things. And so we wanted to have this presentation. We felt as a board, we should sign this letter, pushing back on some of these things to get more information. And there's a lot, there's a lot more to learn, but it seems like they are an expedited timeline to force districts to comply with this, although they're saying you don't have to. I would, I would note that some of the things that they've asked for, they have the right to ask for that information. So they have the right to get that information. It's, I think it's the first time we've received such a detailed request, and we believe that some of the information they already have. When they started asking about resources and buses and classes and stuff like that, it seems to me like they're going to want to pool resources in individual schools, which would mean busing, busing kids or moving kids around potentially as a way to solve for some of the issues that other districts might have, that we might have, or vice versa. I think we do a pretty good job of servicing our existing students currently with the existing tax base, with the existing classes we provide. So I don't see it as an issue for us, but nonetheless, we're going to be required to follow the plan that they've laid out, at least, you know, under the timeline they've laid out through January 2025. So I'll, Mr. Trustee Necco and Trustee Papas took some time to listen to the webinar that, that was NICID, right? That NICID, the state ed, NICID, state ed had for school districts and can help talk through some of the things that they heard, some of the questions that were asked and maybe elaborate or speak differently on things that they might disagree with, I said.
Thank you, President Silio. Just one thing before I start. I just want to make a statement that with any of these types of situations, I always try to look at things objectively. I want to give the situation a benefit of the doubt. And when the PowerPoint was shared, I found it interesting that they left out the questions and comments that were shared or asked during the, during the initial presentation. Just to really echo a lot of the points that President Silio and Superintendent Sinha had mentioned, the four-month turnaround at the start of the school year, three-month actually, is suspect, especially running in conjunction with startup. Words like mandate, words like force, taking away autonomy, compliance, these are things that are very, very concerning. There were a number of questions that, and comments that I had posted in the chat, and to the, the moderator did bring it up to the two people that were presenting, and you did not get a solid answer. I'll briefly go through the questions. Prior to the state ed encouraging and proposing, please share the times and instances when state ed encouraged collaboration on this level. They couldn't produce it. There was not a solid answer given. And just something that Dr. Sinha had said earlier, strong education is going to, it's automatic that you're going to collaborate. You're going to collaborate with fellow districts. You're going to share ideas with other districts, with other superintendents, with other administration. Something else that was of concern, charter schools would also be given access. So the question I had posed is if charters are given access to resources of their public counterparts, what is the purpose of charters? Will we gain access to the charter funding, not the resources, but the funding? Again, no response. How does this plan work with federal Title I and Title III funding? Title I is poverty, is extra money that is given for poverty, and Title III is for E and L. Those are federally earmarked funds that cannot be used without good reason, that needs to be approved for any other students than Title I and Title III students. What steps are being taken to ensure that those mandates are still met and aligned with student need? Does this plan contradict the existence of Title I and Title III funding? No response. And it was presented. Also too, they're doing this under the mask of sharing resources. So something that is obviously a massive concern for all districts is servicing special education. So I presented a scenario, a home district that has a special education servicing issue that the neighboring district was going to handle under reorganization. The neighboring district was unable to address. Who is liable? Now, also too, if that district, typed in a follow-up question, if that district now needs those special education resources back, who gets precedence? No response. Finally, and I had posted, I said, apologies if this seems abrasive, but the state ed is asking us to rely on them when it takes the better part of five months to return results on graded math, ELA, and NICE ASLAD exams. This proposal forces us to rely on the same system. When that point was brought up, the moderator did bring into account something that actually Dana had mentioned earlier at prior meetings, when we're doing capital plans, if we needed to make adjustments to a capital plan, if it's fast-tracked, how long does it take, Dana? If there's a change in a capital plan and it's fast-tracked, ballpark. It's the better part of a year and a half, I think you'd said. So we're relying on a system that takes five months to get results back on a graded exam, 18 months on giving us permission to use funds that we have raised and we have allocated, and they want us to entrust them with more power. Some of the other things that are a little bit infuriating, and the city has always looked at in a bad light. The city has had for the better part of almost 20 years, growth percentile and proficiency ratings on state exams. The state does not provide that. The state is lacking behind in everything. They cannot manage the plans that they have in place now, and they want more control. I, I have to tell you, I rarely like to go out on a limb like this. I just, I don't. And again, just to echo a lot of what was being said, obviously, we have the letter from the Board. I don't really feel as if that they can handle the issues that they currently have, and they're going to bite off more than they can chew.
I'll just keep my thoughts brief because a lot of my thoughts, you know, are very similar to my fellow trustees. But in attending that webinar, it seemed that the goal of this regionalization plan is to create an advocacy group that would then be able to more effectively convey to legislators what it is that our districts need. My concern with that is the fact that, like Dr. Sinha had mentioned already in the presentation, is that we have that collaboration already with our fellow districts through our Nassau BOCs collaboration. So to me, this regionalization plan doesn't seem necessary when we already have those relationships, and we can use those relationships to advocate for what we need without having this emergency regulation. The other thing that is very concerning for me is when you go on the website for state ed and you take a look at this regionalization plan, what they don't have, which is still a work in progress, is what an actual regionalization plan would look like. And the interim progress report is also something that is a work in progress. So they're requiring districts to submit all of this information to participate in a plan. And I know it's, they're saying that it is required that we submit the strengths and needs assessment tool, but the actual participation in whatever regionalization plan gets developed could possibly be optional. They still have not determined what that regionalization plan would even look like. So if you want to say, okay, so what would, what would a possible regionalization plan look like? It is still, it says work in progress on the state website. So I just want to say that they have not even told districts, they've required us to submit this information, but they have not outlined for districts what a possible plan would even look like or how we would determine our progress towards making those plans. So it doesn't seem reasonable that we should be expected to participate in something that we don't even know what it actually would look like. And it is concerning that I don't know whether the people who have created these plans have even figured out what that is supposed to look like. So that's very concerning. Also, the fact that Board of Education trustees of all of these local districts, and I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it doesn't seem like we play a part in any of this. So it really would be meetings between our superintendent and then our BOC superintendent. But Board of Education trustees play no role, from what I can see from any of the information that we have provided. There is, they're not outlining at all what our role is in any of those conversations. So that's also something that's really concerning for me. And I don't know if I'm wrong on that, if you have seen any outlining of that, but I have not. outlining of that, but I have not seen Board of Education trustees mentioned in any of the development of these conversations or being part of these conversations. Right, so we are completely left out of that conversation. Right, well, that's what I did. I went to the website and I said, okay, so what would, what would a possible regionalization plan look like? And you click on it and it says, like, in progress, or to, I I can't remember exactly what it says, but they have not provided a, an example. The other, the other question I had was the data that we have submitted, the Strengths and Needs Assessment Tool, is what percentage of that is is information that you think State Ed already has at their fingertips?
Well, we haven't submitted anything yet.
But what they're asking for, like, what percentage of that is information that they already have? Or could already obtained from whatever records they have, or whatever we have to report?
The best I can give you is a very precise, a lot of it.
Okay.
Because there, you know.
Majority of it?
Having not completed it yet, I can't say for sure.
Okay.
But it is a substantial amount of data that the state already had.
That is one thing that the superintendents we were talking about is that you have all this data, so why are we, why are you asking us to give it to you again in the format that you are requesting it? So that's, that's frustrating, because they've given us a format already of how they want the data, and they've, they've, they have a way of organizing it themselves, because they own it, right?
Right.
That's because they haven't organized it yet, and I want you to do all the work for them.
That is frustrating, because we shouldn't be asked of something that.
It's almost like we're doing their work for them, so instead of them having to compile all of this data, they're having, they're putting that responsibility on the districts to pull this together for them.
They know the special education.
They know special education, they know E and L, they know the state exams, they know the Regents exams, they know the AP exams, and they're all attached by student ID. A basic Excel formula will link all of that information up for them. They have all of this.
So we have submitted a letter as a board to State Ed. What about just people in our community? So I know that the Long Island Coalition, I know that they have on their website a letter that community members could use as like a sample letter so that they can send their concerns directly to State Ed, but how, is there any other resource that you have found, or is there any way that we could make that? I mean, this presentation will, I'm sure, could be on the website, but any way that we could make it available so that families in the community could directly express their concerns to State Ed as well, because the more voices that are heard, the better during this comment period?
Yeah, I mean, we have reached out to our local, you know, local political leaders, but there's not a single mechanism, I think what it is, what our parents, you know, our community members, they can voice their concerns, right, you know, there, there are email addresses right through the State Education Department, through there, or it could be through, even through BOC's, that they may be able to voice their concerns, and then our local, local political leaders. That's, that's the best way, but there's not a formal mechanism to do that.
Just to put, just to maybe be repetitive, but at the risk of it, what Kristen was saying is no mention of the Board of Education, which means to me, no local control, so there's no role for the people over here, your elected Board of Education, and our superintendent effectively reports to BOC's. You're welcome to come to these meetings, but you will be dealing with an administrative bureaucratic team that doesn't necessarily care about Garden City School District, they care about some broader regionalization plan, which I view as negative, and, you know, we pay a lot in taxes, people take pride in the school. They've served our students well, and I don't see this personally yet as any way, anything but a negative potentially for our district, and I certainly don't see any positives from it as outlined. As Trustee Janeco said, they can't even get basic stuff right that they deal with, so what would make them think that taking, you know, was it fifty-three Nassau districts? And I don't know how many hundred across the state and trying to regionalize them, I can only see a bigger mess than maybe they already have, that they can't, they can't operate through currently.
What we were just saying, we could put a template of a letter on our website.
That would be wonderful. Yeah, I know the Coalition has a template, but if there's some.
They do, they, they did, they did have a letter, but we can make our own.
Yeah, that would be wonderful, because I, I know that if it's difficult for people to find the time, but if they have a template that they can easily send on, it might be a more effective way of.
What we do have on our webpage is the Board of Education site. Once you click on it, there's a Board of Advocacy, and that's where we, we're gonna, you have your, the letters there, but the Board of Education sent out. Plus, we'll put this presentation there, and maybe that form letter if parents want to write, they can. You can do that for sure.
Sorry, I'll say one last thing, because I had multiple people ask me, will this mean my taxes go down? And I would say, no. I would probably lean towards the opposite. I don't see this in any way, shape, or form lowering your taxes, so maybe it's stating the obvious, but I figured I'd say it anyway.
I'll be brief. I'm going to take the layman's approach to this. This is nothing in my eyes but a big government broad brush, you know, power grab. Having worked in the government, you know, when, when, in the police department in the eighties, when, when things were centralized, crime was out of control, they actually, the biggest thing they did to lower crime was they decentralized, and they put the power in the local precinct hands. Dramatic crime drop, shocking. You know, these meetings, you know, we're here, you know, sometimes we help, sometimes we try to help. These meetings will, in my eyes, become obsolete, because we're all elected. If you want to get rid of Artie, sorry, Artie, you would vote Artie out. We, there really will, in my eyes, will not be any, anything we can do if this is the case, so it's something I think we need, we will need if this, again, there's a lot of unknowns, but if the known, unknowns become known, similar to what they do with Casino, I think there needs to be a big push by the community.
No further questions or comments? We can do citizens' questions or comments, if anybody would like to come up as it relates to our discussions? Preferably, but if you have one question or two, we can.
Sorry, I just, I have to just talk about this issue. I was here at the last meeting and I talked about the bus issue for Hemlock, I mean, I guess you guys talked about transportation, so this kind of could be related. I'm, I don't know if you guys got emails about this, but I'm just gonna Bus thirty-three for Hemlock School, I'm Erica Balkama, I live on St. Paul's Crescent right over here. It was two weeks ago today. The, my six-year-old daughter, her, her bus is supposed to come at three thirty-six, generally three forty, three forty-five on a good day. They got off, the bus had four oh three. The bus, there was a substitute driver, the bus was lost, driving around town with twenty-five and six-year-olds on it. At three forty-five, I start reaching out to some of the other parents. One of the moms, five stops ahead of me, says, we haven't seen the bus yet, so I'm in an actual panic, because we don't know what to do. I called the school, nobody picks up at the school. I called the Transportation Department, no idea that this bus is essentially missing. Calls the bus driver, says, yeah, he got a little lost, he's on his way. He was driving, he went through Seventh Street, he was over by Homestead, just no idea what was going on, and nobody from the Transportation Department or the school district had any idea that this bus was missing. And like, as parents, it was terrifying. One of the kids on the bus had an accident, they were on the bus for an hour, my daughter was hysterically crying, a lot of the kids were hysterically crying. Obviously, super upset parents about this issue. Reach out to the principal, who tells me that she, her email from two weeks ago said, I've included Linda Green, our Director of Transportation, so we can work together to address these concerns. Thank you for your understanding. Basically, like, like I tell my kids when they ask me something, like, sure, I'll think about it. And honestly, this bus, these are the few blocks over here that have to, that were zoned for Stratford, but we have to go all the way to Hemlock, even though geographically, we're much closer to Homestead. It's, the teachers, at parent teacher conferences, we're bringing it up to a few of the parents, that it's always been an issue. The bus has shown up three times this year at eight thirty to pick our children up, school starts at eight thirty, so it's super disruptive, these kids are coming to school twenty minutes late, they're standing outside at Hemlock waiting to get picked up, because I'm one of the very few people who probably realizes this, we lived on Brixton last year, and we were Homestead, so we moved to St. Paul's Crescent in the second half of the year, so my children became walkers. So at Homestead, the buses pull away around three oh seven, at Hemlock, it's closer to three fifteen, because the buses are dropping off somewhere else first. So the fact that the buses are leaving later, these kids are standing outside, and then they have to go so much further, is just it's been an issue for years, and I know people, the parents have said, like, every couple of years, someone will come and complain and complain and complain, and they'll fix the buses, and something will happen, but it's just it's a big issue. I, my daughter's in first grade, I have a four-year-old, so this is going to be me for three more years, because it's just it's impossible to get off the bus at three forty-five. If you have younger children, you realize, and you know, we have to go to Religion at St. Joseph's, it starts at four o'clock, and my daughter gets off the bus at three oh, three forty-five, run inside, run to St. Joe's, I tried to get there, but she's late, and they don't love it, and it's a requirement for if you're Catholic and you're trying to receive the sacrament, so it's just, for these kids, it's really unfair that this is just, you know, forty-five minutes to an hour on the bus, not to mention this, which, why I really bring this up, is there needs to be some system in place to understand when a bus is, like, essentially missing, with all these kids on it, and there's no communication with the parents. So just, it was like a pretty terrifying experience for all of us, and I don't know how aware you guys are that it happened, so.
Thank you.
Let me just, two things, we were aware with your email when you had sent it, we did follow up with, with Ms. Green around this, this bus. And, you know, one of the reasons we send a lot of these Parents Square messages to our parents, that particular one was the, I believe, and I'm looking at Dana, because I think you may remember, the, this bus driver had to make a U-turn. Do you remember, do you remember, is that the one that you? Right there, okay. Okay. Can I ask you one thing? Is the, in terms of the transportation right now, for last week, this week, is that, is that better? Yeah, they do, they, 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 you know, the, the buses, they depart, it's around three fifteen, and they go, they go across town because of just the location of where you are, you know, with the buses. Yeah, it's a tough one.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, at this time, may have a motion that there's no further business before the Board of Education, the work session is adjourned, and the special session is opened. All in favor? Aye. Do you notice if today's meeting is provided to the public and each member of the Board of Education required as law, all members are in attendance. At this time, I'm sorry. Yeah, I have to go back. At this time, may have a motion to accept the agenda for November twelfth, twenty twenty-four, special session as presented.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye. There's two addendums to tonight's agenda. But first, to make more efficient use of the meeting time, the Board of Education authorizes the consent agenda as part of the meeting agenda. The consent agenda allows for one motion to approve multiple items, and such items as, on the agenda, the Board of President will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda, and will ask if the board members wish to have any discussion or clarification on specific items within that agenda, then the board will vote on the consent agenda motion. At this time, may have a motion that the Board of Education approves the consent agenda, which includes business over the board items E one, personnel matters items F one through F two, and business office matters G one through G five. All in favor? Aye. This is an addendum one, it's a supplemental insurance addendum. Be resolved that the Board of Education approves the proposals from J.J. Stanis and Company, Inc. for Vision House Hospital Indemnity and Accidental Death and Disbursement for the CSEA and Paraprofessional Unit at the costs noted on the agenda. Be further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the district clerk to execute said agenda, said agreement on its behalf. All in favor? Aye. Then second addendum is a memorandum of agreement for, with the CSEA, be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools. The Board of Education hereby approves a side letter agreement with the Civil Service Employment Employees Association Carthage City School Nonteaching Unit concerning a change in excess medical benefits, and authorizes the Superintendent of Schools to execute the side letter agreement. All in favor? Aye. Future Board of Education meetings, Monday, Monday, November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, regular session at eight fifteen PM here at the Garden City High School. At this time, may have a motion that there be no further business to come before the board, that the meeting be adjourned. All in favor? Aye.